Thank you for joining us. This is a regular meeting of the town council, Carefree Town Council, and the meeting will come to order. Can this please take a silent roll call? A pledge of allegiance, Cindy Dymo, or Susie Dymo, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Leading us to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this meeting again is, is recorded and is streamed live on YouTube. So for those who are not able to join us, when you, when you speak, if you speak at the podium, or if we speak as council members, we should make an effort to speak into the microphone so folks can hear us. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed hereunder are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be discussed separately. Item number one, approval of the March 7th, 2023 town council minutes. Item number two is not in our packet, so we'll skip that. Item number three, acceptance of the cash receipts and dispersments report for February 2023. Does the council like to remove any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, passes unanimously.
Mayor?
Yes.
That's consent agenda one and three.
Correct.
Can you amend that motion, please?
Okay.
Oh, make an amendment to just the consent agendas, one and three. One and three.
Not working. That's better.
Okay.
Okay, second to amended agenda?
I second.
Motion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed? Okay, passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, call to the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. The public may address the council on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the council may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the council, may ask staff to review a matter, direct staff to study the matter, reschedule the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, the council may not discuss or take legal action at this time. So please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. And when you're called, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and please be sure to speak into the microphone.
So, Mayor, I noticed that we have a number of these call to the public slips. So I'm going to be timing you to three minutes, and I ask that when you hear my timer go off, please leave the podium. And for those of you who finish before my timer goes off, thank you.
Okay, first up is Sandy Carl from the Desert Foothills Theater.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sandy Carl, and I'm here as producing artistic director of the Desert Foothills Theater. We, our offices reside at the Holland Center, 34250 North 60th Street in Scottsdale, Arizona, 85266. I am here tonight as, thank you for the invitation, Mr. Mayor and the council members. I am here to inform you and our lovely community of a current wonderful program that is currently residing at the Centers and Lincoln Pavilion, right here in your backyard. We are producing a, have produced a production of The Secret Garden, and it is a beautiful theater, live musical, featuring a wonderful talented group of teenagers. And this show is our season finale, and we are just looking to spread the word, to support ticket sales, to sustain a program that serves the youth in our community in such invaluable and important ways. We love to do arts in this community. We have several sponsors and community supporters. We drive revenue to local businesses, and our programs are critically important. We've had a challenging year. We have about 300 more tickets to sell, to call it a sold-out run for this weekend, and it is a gorgeous production. If any of our community members have ever attended Arizona Broadway Theater, things like that, please make your plans to join us. There's a little brochure right there on the table for anybody interested. Thank you for the invitation tonight, and have a wonderful rest of your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mike Wald.
My name is Mike Wald. I live at 336601 North Mule Train Road in condo number 43B in Carefree. I'm here for two reasons. One is, some of you know that I've been coordinating retreats for veterans, healing retreats for veterans for the last 10 years here. When veterans come back from their military experiences, oftentimes they come back with, with spiritual and psychological wounds. I wanted to, we have one coming up with women veterans only. Women veterans have a unique situation in the military. Unfortunately, many of them are coming back with unique forms of trauma. And so we have a retreat coming up. It's Spirit in the Desert Retreat Center. It's just really up the block here. On April 14th to 16th, there's some brochures there. So I wanted to advertise that, let everybody know. Also wanted to thank the council for their support, the staff for their support, also the Kiwanis, the Knights of Columbus here at Our Lady of Joy Church, Chamber of Commerce, everybody in this community has been supportive. And this is our 17th retreat up here at Spirit in the Desert. We've done these over, we've done these in different places in Arizona. We've almost, about 400 veterans over the last 10 years. So I thank you very much. I thank you for the support that you folks have given. There will be a lot of healing taking place in two weeks. So pray for the folks that are up there, the ladies. I've interviewed the ones that are going to be there. They're in need of healing, and we will provide that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rural Metro Chief Tim Sol.
I've used the glasses joke every time I count, but I'll do it again. Hello, my name's Tim Sol, Rural Metro Fire Chief. I don't know my address up here. So, couple, couple things, just to, I want to thank everybody who came out for their support. I also want to thank the council for your support and the town manager. There's a number of things I just wanted to address, and it's probably going to be a little bit different than what I've addressed in the past. So, again, I appreciate the support, and I believe strongly in the process that the town is going through regarding the provision of emergency services in the levy and allowing people to, and through their representatives and the vote, to make a decision on what they consider to be best for the town. That is the American way, and it's the, and it's something I believe very strongly in. At one point in this process, I thought that I could be involved in a way of providing information and data that would allow people to make decisions. I was wrong, and I don't, I don't apologize easily, and I don't enjoy it, but I need to apologize because what I thought in the, in my own naive way of the politics was that we could actually have a respectful discourse, and people could have contrary opinions. What I found out was that that's not the case, unfortunately. And so what I'm here for is to basically ask the folks behind us to not use Rural Metro as a club. There's been a number of things that have come up, and I want to address them. There's a, something that was stated that the town administrator put a gag order on Rural Metro and blocked us from making statements. The only time firefighters can speak is when they are off duty and dressed in Union Tire. That is not true. I put a gag order on my firefighters from getting involved while on duty in the politics. I told them they could speak about what we do, but that we were not going to allow, I was not going to allow my employees to continue to speak as I had done, right? I was doing it as well. And when I realized that this was not going to be a respectful dialogue, and that we were being used as a club to beat up the town manager and the council, then I put a stop to it for myself, and I put a stop to it for my employees. That's my right as an employer and a boss, and I did that. I'm not able to tell the union what they can, yes?
You only have 18 seconds left.
Really?
Yeah.
Holy crap!
You don't have a big agenda.
Hey, Chief, go ahead.
Okay. So anyway, I was the one who did that. Another thing, have you noticed Rural Metro's been excluded by the town administration from practically everything that the town has provided to residents regarding fire and EMS? That's not correct. You guys have involved Rural Metro since the beginning, or at least since I've been here over the past year and a half, we've been involved continuously in that process, including meeting and discussing with the Public Safety Advisory Committee. Doesn't it seem odd that our own department would have nothing to say as they watch their 55 years of service? We have plenty to say, and I was trying to say it, but we couldn't say it without being used as a club to beat up the town and the town council. So I stopped. It's, you know, certainly it is our desire to maintain, you know, services here. We like being here, we believe we do a good job, and we want to stay. But again, it's not up, it's up to the town, it's up to the citizens of the town, and that's their right. And the town prohibited Rural Metro from submitting information in the voter information election pamphlet. Again, not true. I did. I prohibited our folks from doing that as Rural Metro. They could certainly provide it as citizens if they chose to. But, so, again, I don't, I'm not going to allow rumors and innuendo to be used as coming from Rural Metro to be, to beat up the town manager and the council because you guys are doing a diff, administrator, a very difficult job. And you need to, you know, you need to, to be treated respectfully, and I want to do that. The other piece, and again, I'm trying to make it fast. The other piece is with regarding, is regarding relationships, because this is all about relationships. The outcome of the vote, if we, if we lose a positive relationship with the town and the, and the town administrator, because we've been used as a club throughout, how well is that going to do to provide emergency services to the citizens of Carefree? Right? It, it won't. It, it will be very poor. And so the other piece to that is, there's been some videos that have come out, and some of that was act, was factual, some of it not quite so much. And one thing I wanted to touch on is the issue of mutual aid. Mutual aid is a great tool, and we've had wonderful success with it. And we've had that success in the town of Carefree. But there is no obligation for people to provide mutual aid. Is it the right thing to do? Absolutely. Would I ever be caught in a situation where I wouldn't do it? Absolutely not. But if we destroy relationships with our partners because of these videos and because of how things have been communicated in a not very respectful fashion, we could very well end up in a situation where the vote doesn't pass. We end up being in the emergency services provider. We end up with a fire, and they say, pound it, because you guys were spreading false information before this, and now you think you're going to, you know, and we can't do that. And so I ask everybody here, we have to have respectful dialogue. There is no, there are no demons. The demonization in politics has gotten out of hand, and it's out of hand here. And we still have another month and a week or so we can have to, to the vote. I can't wait for that to be, so we can be done with this. We can't beat everybody up because if we destroy relationships, regardless of the outcome of that vote, it's going to be very difficult to maintain the positive level of services that are being provided today. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, Mr. Greg Warner.
Yeah, my name's Greg Warner. I'm a resident at 9519 East Rumping Road, just up the road in Carefree, Rolling Hills. And the reason I'm here tonight is just to kind of relay a situation. 19, 10 days ago, I sent an email to the town via the website, and I requested some information. And I specifically requested information that would help me better understand the need for the property tax proposal. And I specifically asked for response times from Rural Metro and surrounding communities, namely Cave Creek and Scottsdale. Response times, and I also wanted to know how many times we go to Cave Creek, how many times we go to Scottsdale, and how many times we come here. They come here, I should say. The response I got, I don't feel was satisfactory because they told me basically that Rural Metro doesn't publish that information. I didn't really ask what Rural Metro published. I asked the town to provide me with information that I think is essential to make it a good decision. And I'm really not very happy with the response I got, and I'd be interested whether you can talk about it now or talk about it later, what you will and can do to provide what I'm asking. Okay? Fair enough.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Lisa Rindi.
Hi, Lisa Rindi, 35601 North Mamie Maud, Carefree. It's easy to say no to taxes. It's easy to love our history with Rural Metro firefighters. It's easy to rely on shoppers and visitors to our community and on shared revenues from big bad state government to fund all our essential community needs here in Carefree. It is not easy to take the time to understand how our public safety has truly changed and how the move to automatic aid in a fiscally responsible and sustainable manner will improve our fire and emergency medical services and response times for all Carefree residents. What's changed? Since the Cave Creek fires in 2020, surrounding communities like Scottsdale and Daisy Mountain Fire District have formally canceled their mutual aid agreements with Rural Metro, leaving Rural Metro to rely on their own internal automatic aid, which consists of only four stations north of the I-60 and east of the I-17, two of them nearly 30 miles away. By joining automatic aid, we would have five fire stations within half the distance of Rural Metro's nearest sister station in Rio Verde Foothills. With automatic aid, the nearest available appropriate emergency resources will be sent every time regardless of jurisdiction. Our Carefree station has excellent response times for those near the station, but average response times have risen over 35% to over four minutes and 20 seconds since the Cave Creek conversion to automatic aid. Last month, it was nearly five minutes. Average doesn't cut it for the hundred of Carefree households that are now over four, that are four miles away from the Carefree station and less than two from Phoenix or Cave Creek. Minutes, not seconds, have been added to our emergency response times. I find it rich that those who say no to public safety tout the community knowledge of our wonderful Rural Metro firefighters saving seconds, but are unconcerned that fellow residents have lost minutes in response time. The Phoenix Regional Automatic Aid System is home to nearly 200 fire stations, making it one of the most robust response models worldwide. In addition to EMT, paramedic, and firefighters, automatic aid hosts a myriad of specialized response equipment and personnel to effectively mitigate any emergency safely. Squad 29, capable of responding to high-low angle mountain rescue, trench and building collapse rescue, water rescue, is located just a couple miles away at Phoenix 72. Those that fear monger, that are Carefree engine as part of automatic aid, would spend more time out of Carefree than in Carefree. Cave's Creek, Cave Creek's experience has seen their engine leave 43 times, less than once a week on average during that same period over-
Your three minutes are up.
Did she ever state her address?
I did.
Yes, she did.
Okay, Mr. Ryan York.
Ryan York, 5650 East Via Cassandra Way in Carefree. Mayor Crane and council members, I'm the president of the Carefree Ironwood Estates Homeowners Association. I'm here this evening to publicly state our opposition to rezoning of the northeast corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road, and to correct the historical record regarding the involvement of our neighborhood on prior zoning proposals for this parcel. At the March 7th meeting, we learned of a rezoning proposal for the northeast corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road from commercial use as it is now to mixed use with high-density housing. The conceptual site plan proposes a design that would build high-density housing backing up to the western border of our neighborhood in the form of one, two, three-bedroom apartments containing 110 units. These units will look directly into our backyards. The site plan contains no buffer mitigation features between this vast high-density development and the surrounding neighborhoods. In addition, the high-density apartments will be a sound and lighting nuisance, move natural washes, and negatively impact surrounding property values. The addition of up to 300 additional residents on this small, small parcel will also put a stress on Carefree's water system, police, emergency, human, and social services, and adds a massive traffic flow to an already overburdened traffic corner. Today, we can barely exit our community safely with all of the traffic that's there. In May of 2022, we also reached out to the council in opposition to a prior proposal that would have rezoned to high-density housing, and it was very similar to this current proposal. I'd like to express the gratitude of the HOA to the council that they did not approve that rezoning to high-density, and to request that the council similarly reject this and any other proposals to add high-density housing to that parcel. Understanding the challenges of low-density residential zoning, which is what that parcel was previously, we worked, and the Carefree's need for additional tax revenues, especially given what we're discussing now, we worked cooperatively in good faith with the council and the town in 2018 to change that zoning to commercial, to increase the tax revenues while ensuring that the redirecting of the wash would not flood our properties, negatively impact our property values or our quality of life, and to secure proper deed restrictions to prevent the building of hospitals, gas stations, car washes, and similar. We also worked with Carefree to require any development to provide for a proper border and mitigation features with wall height and lighting restrictions to ensure that the minimal impact to our community and to preserve the congruity of Carefree's overall character and development. That was reflected in ordinance 2018-06, which also provided for a commercial development and the additional attendant sales tax revenues that would go to Carefree. The proposed use predominated by high-density housing actively undermines the town's stated goals, ordinance 2018-06, and the livability of our shared community. We oppose any rezoning of the northeast corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road that involves high-density housing.
Okay, Kevin, I have a hard time reading your last name.
Fecto.
Come on up, sir.
Is that it?
That's you.
I get that a lot. Good evening, I'm Kevin Fecto. I reside at 34899 North Desert Wind Circle. I'm the vice president of Carefree Ironwood Estates HOA. So at the March 7th meeting, speakers maligned our neighborhood and spread falsehoods. Contrary to our assertions made at this meeting, our neighborhood did not receive any monetary benefit from prior development proposals. In fact, our HOA actually expended a significant portion of our reserves to protect our neighborhood. To correct erroneous comments that were made at the March 7th meeting, it was the town of Cave Creek that failed to issue a will-serv water letter to the prior developer. Developer contribution of $1 million mentioned in the last meeting was a reimbursement to Carefree Water to help cover the cost of bringing the water from Scottsdale to the northeast corner in lieu of Cave Creek Water, and was no benefit to our neighborhood. Actually, the developer made, never made the $1 million payment to Carefree Water, and no water was brought to the corner. Without the water, there was no ability to develop that parcel, and this had nothing to do with zoning. Furthermore, the proposed rezoning does not comply with the ordinance 2018-06 or Carefree's 2030 plan. We remind everyone that when we bought our homes, the northeast corner was zoned low-density residential. Keep in mind, this corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road is the western gateway into Carefree. In 2018, the proposed commercial development, which wasn't ultimately pursued by the developer, was upscale with desert landscaping, and it was compared to DC Ranch at the time. There is far better gateway and distinctly attractive look for Carefree instead of rental apartments. If this rezoning proposal is approved, the first thing that people will see when they enter the western side of Carefree is a low-end, high-density apartment complex, which is completely out of character for Carefree. Carefree had the foresight to prevent such a problem under Carefree's 2030 plan, which addresses the intended uses of these parcels, including, one, provide for the preservation of the natural wash and the natural state in accordance with the flood plan regulations; two, establish an adequate open space buffer; three, provide economically sustainable land that would, that would complement evolving commercial uses in Scottsdale and Cave Creek. High-density leased apartment buildings are not in line with the 2030 plan, which states that development should be cognizant and reflective of its impact and sensitive nature on the Upper Sonoran Desert. This proposed development would not satisfy the goals of this plan. In addition, allowing high-density rental housing to be zoned right next to very low-density residential zoning without any phase out will give southwest corner a disjointed feel. Jumbled zoning would lead to lower property values and a diminished quality of life in the Carefree neighborhoods. We oppose any rezoning of this corner that involves high-density housing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. John Bulkey.
I'm John Bulkey at 34825 North Summit Drive, and a fellow member, board member of the Carefree Ironwood Estates. We supported and continue to support increasing sales tax revenues through upscale commercial development on the northeast corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road. High-density housing would be out of place, not only in the surrounding communities, but in Carefree as a whole. We were asked in 2022 by Thompson Thrift if we were interested in rental housing directly behind us. Of course, we said no. Curiously, they have not approached the neighborhood regarding the current proposal with even higher density housing. Senate Bill 1184 has the potential to remove the rental tax. If that tax is discontinued, Carefree would lose out on the revenue in addition to losing out on potential sales tax and other revenues from the commercial enterprise that would otherwise take, take their place. If the rental tax is not eliminated, we estimate the tax on the apartments is a total of about $80,000 to $100,000 annually, and then there's a much smaller commercial component to provide substantial revenue. This is unacceptable and undoes everything the town wanted to accomplish when the corner was originally rezoned. We are dismayed that the speakers at the prior meeting have the temerity to make accusations against our neighborhood and the council and claim that the town lacks honesty and transparency. It appears the real motivation is to stop or scare people into voting against the proposed property tax that would fund automatic aid. But the Thompson Thrift proposal can't provide a substantial portion of the $1 million-plus required to make that change. In conclusion, we will not support any rezoning or changes to the deed restrictions set forth on ordinance 2018-06 or the previously negotiated and agreed-to plans for development of the northeast corner. We would consider any rezoning to mixed use, particularly with any high-density housing component, to be a breach of the trust and the good faith agreement we had with Carefree to protect our community from these types of projects. Carefree is a wonderful community because it has been carefully planned precisely to avoid these types of rental units, and instead is focused on owner-occupied residential housing and carefully curated limited commercial development. Any development of the northeast corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road should not only be consistent with the character of Carefree and the requirements of the ordinance, but also advance the interests of Carefree as set forth in the 2030 plan. This proposed use actively undermines the town's stated goals, the ordinance, and the livability of our shared community. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Ms. Ariann Buser.
Hi, my name is Ariann Buser, and I'm a resident of Carefree. Thank you for letting me speak today. Basically, automatic aid is unnecessary, costly, and could be destructive to the town of Carefree. Why in the world would we pay more for less? It is a broken and inefficient system, as evidenced by what is currently happening- It is a broken and inefficient system, as evidenced by what is currently happening in Scottsdale and Phoenix. It is not the gold standard, which the opposition has said. I would expect that you have done your research on automatic aid before bringing it as a proposal, and if you had, you would have formed, you would have found out about its flaws. You would have known that the Scottsdale Fire Department, which has auto aid, is actually in crisis right now. Number one, their response time, which by the way, this is publicly available information on their website, their response time right now is almost seven minutes, which is over the two minutes National Fire Protection Agency standard. In an emergency, when every second counts, why would we want to move to a slower response time? So much for the gold standard. Rural Metro, on the contrary, is the gold standard with an average response time of four minutes. Why in the world would we pay more for worse service? Second point, Scottsdale Fire Department, in case you are not aware, has an unprecedented attrition rate of eighty-five percent, eighty-five percent! This means that they are severely understaffed. Why would we want to put our trust in a fire department that can't even keep their first responders? Third point, if you had done your proper due diligence, you would have known that the president of the Professional Firefighters of Arizona, what he said about automatic aid, he stated, "Our one-hundred-and-forty-four fire districts are so strapped for funding and manpower, 911 emergency calls often take upwards of thirty minutes for a response." My question to you is, why are you trying to coerce the residents of Carefree into believing that automatic aid is good for the town? What is your ulterior motive? You know that it isn't good for the town. You're using fear, not facts, to strong-arm residents into a useless tax. The truth is that automatic aid is wrong for Carefree. We are not Phoenix. We are not Scottsdale. We are a small town of eight-point-eight square miles. Rural Metro has been the gold standard for this town for over fifty years, and they are a part of this community. They know every inch of the town. They are well-trained and experienced firefighters and EMTs that respond to every call. They have well-equipped trucks and equipment that serve this town in an emergency situation. Your own council members only recently, i.e. last year, sang the praises of Rural Metro. What happened, all of a sudden, that now you are proposing a ridiculous tax that you know is useless? Are you purposefully trying to squeeze more money out of your residents for your own use? How about you try and use the funds you already have access to better? The residents of Carefree are not your piggy bank for ridiculous taxes. Thank you.
No, I just wanted to clear something up that Mrs. Buser was saying to us. You were saying that we're doing all of this, and we are not. I'm sorry. You were intimating that it was the council and the town that was doing all of this. We are not. There are two points of view. There are two ways to take care of the shortfall that we're going to have from our tax base. Please turn that off. So, I just, you know, there are two points of view. Everybody's entitled to their own point of view, and we have specifically left it to the town and the people of the town, the voters, to decide what is best for the community. So, please don't stand there and accuse us of trying to railroad anybody one way or the other. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Glenn Miller.
My name is Glenn Miller, Carefree resident, and I'm reading a statement from Mark Sayaki, who has to work tonight, couldn't be here. Mayor and members of council, my name is Mark Sayaki. I'm a paramedic captain with Rural Metro and Carefree, and have been with Rural Metro for thirty-eight years. When I signed up as a new firefighter at age twenty-one, I knew that I was taken in out to save lives and property to the best of my ability at all costs. I was and still proud and committed to doing so. I realized that this commitment could mean even making the ultimate sacrifice to save the community and citizens I have sworn to protect. However, I didn't realize the toll this would take on my family and friends. Firefighters protect your community seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. You can sleep better at night knowing we are out there protecting you. I have personally missed my family birthdays, sporting events, anniversaries, important holidays like Christmas, Easter, so you are protected. I never realized emotional toll this would have on me and my fellow firefighters. I have seen and done many amazing things. I have delivered babies, brought deceased people back to life, but there are way too many things I have seen in my career that no one should ever have to see. You will never understand our profession until you walk in our shoes. I've seen families devastated by horrible vehicle accidents, taking the lives of men and women and children. I have seen children come across unsecured firearms with deadly consequences. I have seen bicyclists, bicycle people hit and killed by vehicles and motorcyclists killed on the road. I've seen women and children assaulted. I have seen murders, suicides, terrible burn injuries, and lacerations. I have seen more broken bones than I can ever count. The hundreds of other things you would only see in a horrible show and think that can't be true, well, it is. These are the things I bring home from work with me. When I come home from work and my family asks, "How was my day?", I try to smile and say, "It was all right." I don't want them to really know how my day was. Try telling your spouse about a two-year-old drowning victim, or try to recount the devastation that the parents faced. You may leave your work at the office. Mine comes home with me, engraved in my mind forever. These nightmares wake me up at nights, most nights. Now I have come here to fight for my job. I have to fight to keep protecting the citizens and visitors of Carefree that I have sworn to do so long ago. All because you, the council, want an unnecessary property tax to supposedly fix an unbroken fire department that has served Carefree very well for fifty-five years. I have to stand by and listen to all the lies being spread about my fire department and fellow firefighters by this council-
Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller.
Just so you can tax your citizens. Shame on you. Undone.
Thank you. Perfect.
Trust me, I had a time.
Mr. Stuart Scrutie.
Hi, my name is Stuart Scrutie. I'm a resident and voter in Carefree. I've spoken to hundreds of Carefree citizen voters over the past three or four weeks in front of the post office, and by far, the number-one comment I received from voters is, quote, "We want to keep Rural Metro. We know our firemen, we trust our firemen, they always arrive in less than five minutes, whether it's for a simple rattlesnake removal or a complex emergency." The second-most popular comment is, "We do not want or need a property tax. The current system is safe, not broken. It has the needed backup for safety and does not need to be replaced." The third-most popular comment has been, "Why is the language assuring all proceeds from a property tax, if it should pass, in a separate resolution and not in the body of the ballot question itself that we'll be voting on in two weeks?" By the way, I'm referring to Resolution 2022-19, if you want to look it up on the Carefree website. The skeptic in me thinks that the language is in a separate resolution so that it can be changed at any time by a simple majority vote of the town council to include a forever-expanding list of wants and needs requiring a never-ending demand for property tax increases. Seems like this might be a sleight-of-hand effort by the town council and mayor to pull the wool over our eyes, thinking we won't notice. In either case, this is behavior we citizens should not accept from our elected officials. I urge all Carefree citizens to vote no on this ill-conceived and unnecessary property tax. Thank you.
Ms. Colleen Rose Scrutie. Sorry for mispronouncing your name.
That's okay. He didn't go quite three minutes, so I might be ten seconds over, so just to let you know. My name's Colleen Rose Scrutie. I'm also a Carefree resident and voter, and this is to all the town council members of Mayor Crane. I'm very disappointed in the way that the town council, Mayor Crane, and the PAC supporting Vote Yes for Public Safety has handled this election effort. What you are saying, printing, and presenting to the residents of Carefree is mostly false information. You're misleading the people, trying to scare them into voting for a property tax. Even your wording on the ballot is misleading. You do not mention one word about the fire department and the fact that should the property tax pass, you would get rid of Rural Metro to go with another fire department with automatic aid. You say that our public safety is at risk. The fact is that Rural Metro has been successfully caring for Carefree for over fifty years and has their own system for backup, which is supported by GMR, one of the largest rescue ambulance companies in the country. You say that automatic aid makes Carefree safer. The fact is that automatic aid for Carefree makes it less safe and will have slower response times. The bigger cities will be calling upon Carefree to come to their aid all the time, not the other way around. How many times has Daisy Mountain called for aid from Rural Metro recently? Over a hundred times. Rescue vehicles will not be closer to Carefree. They and our own rescue vehicles will be further away. You say that automatic aid reduces response times. The fact is that automatic aid increases response times for places like Carefree. Per the Phoenix Fire Department, they're in a crisis. It is understaffed, under-equipped, and cannot keep up with the ever-rising volume of emergency calls. They're approaching a nine-minute response time for Phoenix. Just think how long that would be for Carefree. Officials in the Scottsdale Fire Department are reporting that they're anticipating losing eighty-five percent of their force. So, if they have to hire new firefighters to replace the eighty-five percent that retire, how experienced will those firefighters be coming to Carefree? They're averaging around a seven-minute response time. Rural Metro's average response time is around four minutes, less than the National Fire Protection Agency standards. With all the emergency calls in the busier cities, our trucks in Carefree will be called to help them all the time. Who then will be here to help when our own Carefree residents need help? No one. And whoever does come will definitely not be here in five minutes or less. You say that automatic aid protects our quality of life. You say that people choose to live in Carefree for its views, weather, and tight-knit community. The fact is, Rural Metro right here in Carefree protects our quality of life, as they have for over fifty years. Yes, people do come here for the views, weather, and tight-knit community, so stop trying to ruin that with tall, ugly buildings, bright lights, and confrontational and misleading information, which is trying to destroy our small, little town. You say voting yes maintains our fiscal responsibility. Without the tax, the town would have to spend about forty percent of its budget to fund automatic aid. The fact is, Carefree now has over seventy million dollars and pays for Rural Metro with sales tax revenue. And if the town would be smart with its development and general plan, they could increase that sales tax revenue. We don't need a property tax to pay for Rural Metro, only the more expensive automatic aid option that the town council wants. I have been speaking with hundreds of residents, and they all tell me they don't want Rural Metro to leave-
Mr. Scrutie, I've given you the extra ten seconds.
For ones, please listen to the residents of Carefree and what they really want instead of what you want. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Spencer Peters.
Good evening, good evening. I just want to tell everyone that's in support of us, I appreciate you for being here. My name's Spencer Peters. I'm a B-shift engineer here at Carefree. The address to that station is three-seven-four-one, North Tom Darlington. Excuse me. I'm not a public speaker, so I'm just going to kind of read what I've written. As you know, my name's Spencer Peters. I'm a fire engineer with Rural Metro in Carefree. I have been a fireman since I was twenty-two years old. I'm fifty-three years old now, and I've been in Carefree since 2003. Firefighting has been being a first responder, and I love what I do and proud of what I do, proud of doing my job every day. And these are some of the facts that have already been touched on, but anyway. During the February council meeting, Councilman Hatcher made the comment that for roughly one-point-eight million, Carefree was having ninety-seven percent to ninety-eight percent of its needs fulfilled, and he pondered why the town would want to write a check for an additional one million to cover the remaining two percent. This really struck a chord, so we had our dispatch center pull the stats for the last five years. During the period from January first, 2018, to December thirty-first, 2022, there were three-thousand fifty-eight calls for service in the town of Carefree. During that time, we requested mutual aid six times. This means that Rural Metro did not just handle ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent of the calls, we handled ninety-nine-point-eight percent of the calls without any assistance. So, why would Carefree residents want to pay an additional one million in property tax to cover the remaining zero-point-two percent when they already are getting it for free now through sales tax revenue? There's been a lot of talk about how much mutual aid Rural Metro is sending to Daisy Mountain and whether the responses are mutual aid or whether they are required due to us holding the CON, which is Certificate of Necessity. And here's a quick breakdown. Before April thirteenth, Rural Metro held the CON for Cave Creek and was legally obligated to run calls for ambulance service in Cave Creek. However, Rural Metro did not or did provide mutual aid to Daisy Mountain in their other service areas, like Anthem, New River, Desert Hills, Black Canyon City, sixty-two times. Between January first and April thirteenth, oh, I'm sorry, between that time, from April thirteenth through the end of 2022, we provided mutual aid to them thirty-five times. This year, as of March twenty-fourth, we have given Daisy Mountain mutual aid twenty-four times. So, in the last fifteen months, we have provided mutual aid to Daisy Mountain one-hundred-and-twenty-one times. The reality is, that mutual aid is working. We all go into this business to help people, and when our neighbors call for help, we are proud to be there for them.
Spencer?
Yes, ma'am.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Ms. Jan Neal.
Good evening, my name's Jan Neal. I'm a resident of Carefree. I would like to talk about trust and integrity. In a recent meeting, the council said that you're neutral on the property tax and automatic aid, but yet, Ms. Croyer, tonight, you reiterated that, and... But I read the Sonora News, and I see editorials. You're fear-mongering, you're scaring people, and that makes me mad. It really makes me mad. You have a senior community here. People respond to fear, so what better way to sell a property tax but to instill fear? I think it's shameful. So many people here tonight have stated the facts. I don't need to go through the facts, but there have been recent information and articles regarding issues with that automatic aid county-wide shared service, not dedicated service that we have with Rural Metro, including double the response times. And again, what's going on here? Why, when in July of 2022, you praised, excuse me, Mayor Peterson and I believe Mr. Ness, praised Rural Metro for their fifty-plus years of service and signed a contract? So, what has changed? This is all very confusing to us. So, if taxpayers or residents or citizens don't feel that we have the trust of our elected officials, we voted for you. You were supposed to represent us. We need to feel safe. We feel safe. So, what's the problem? What is the ulterior motive? It appears that there's something else going on here. So, it's conflicting. So, we expect our elected officials to act with integrity, with the utmost in integrity. We are asking each one of you who have been recently elected, and we don't want to hear another because I make the rules, as Mayor Crane, you said to me in the last meeting, when I was trying to yield my time to Ms. Barber. How do you think we respond to that? So, I'm speaking from the heart here. I really am, and I just wish you'd listen to us. You probably see us all in green and wonder, "Oh, those people..."
Your time is up.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. William Dougherty.
Hello, I'm William Dougherty, and I reside at seventy-eight eighteen East Long Rifle Road. Mr. Mayor, members of council, and neighbors, my comments, no surprise, address the upcoming property tax vote. But first off, I wanted to thank you for volunteering your service to the city, our wonderful town. So, not that I agree with everybody, but I do appreciate your volunteering. And I think when Glenn read that about the firefighter and his words, I think that gave everybody a lot of perspective. And we got our differences, but my comments. It seems to me that the proponents of the proposed property tax repeatedly make two statements in an attempt to persuade Carefree's property owners to vote for the tax. If you do not support the tax, you'll be risking lives and property. Number two, the proposed tax will be modest, nominal, and controlled. After doing my own limited research, much as I could, I've concluded that the facts do not support these statements. You've heard many of the facts tonight. Stating that someone who votes against the tax will be risking lives and property, to me, is irresponsible, especially when such a statement is not supported by fact. Rural Metro has provided us with high-quality, reliable protection at an affordable price for many years, and I can attest to that personally. They are stable, they are dependable. To replace an affordable and proven service with one that is admittedly unaffordable makes no sense. No fiscal sense, no moral sense, to me. By continuing our Rural Metro arrangement, we will not be risking lives and property, as far as I can see. Furthermore, there is no guarantee that automatic aid would be an improvement. And even if automatic aid offered Carefree a better service, the fact is, Carefree cannot afford it. I believe if we cannot afford it, we should not buy it. The proponents of the tax state that the tax amount will be nominal and modest. I disagree. I ran the numbers on my own property, using the proponents' estimated unit costs. It equated to a twenty-nine percent increase in my property tax bill, if it goes through, and that is just for the first year. That may be nominal to some people, but not to me. The tax bill will increase every year that the limited property value increases. That's a fact. I urge my neighbors to take a moment, do the math, using your own property data, determine for yourself if the numbers are modest. Perhaps the most disturbing fact to consider is that a property tax is not based on one's ability to pay. We all know that. A property tax is especially burdensome for our neighbors who are living on a fixed income and who are elderly.
Sorry, Mr. Dougherty, your time is up.
Can't be. I've timed this. Alrighty, thank you.
Dr. Marty Markatus. Sorry if I mispronounced your name, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, neighbors and friends. I'm a recently retired healthcare professional. For forty years, I practiced in Sun City. That community demographically mirrors a lot of what is Carefree. And I have to tell you, I love Rural Metro. I've lived here for eighteen years, and I've lived through the twenty-twenty fires and watched the planes go over and all that stuff. And they were there, and they did what they had to do, and they were great. Nobody is debating the ability of Rural Metro. The landscape is changing. The landscape has changed. It puts them at a decided disadvantage. And I don't know about you, I don't want to be the guy who's waiting for the second ambulance and it takes thirty-five minutes to get there. The response times that people have been kicking around, more than four minutes is questionable at best. And out here, the way with the gates and that sort of thing, it's not unlikely for it to be higher than it would be, say, in somewhere where there are not security gates and things of that ilk. But, like I said, I don't want to be the one who's waiting for the second ambulance. So it makes, to me, I don't scrimp on my healthcare. And as much as I love Rural Metro, and you guys are great, don't get me wrong, I just think that your situation is changing and making it difficult for you to provide the level of care that we've come to rely on, and I'm not sure that I can any longer. Thank you.
Ms. Kathleen Alai.
My name is Kathleen Alai, and I'm a Carefree resident. I would like to know why this administration is working so hard to actively block our firemen from speaking the truth about the stellar record and getting the other side of the debate to the residents. As late as bringing Chief Soul to speak to us today is the latest attempt in trying to silence the other side of the debate. Chief Soul stated that Rural Metro is being used as a club. You are incorrect, sir. Nobody is using Rural Metro as a club. By the sheer fact that Chief Soul said that he blocked his men from providing the information necessary to the residents, he's actually doing a disservice to the residents. By the sheer fact that you guys kept and did not give Rural Metro the opportunity to be part of the five open houses, whether it's Chief Soul or Gary calling Chief Soul, whatever it is, we have seen a lot of confusions and concern from the residents. In the meantime, while you guys are claiming impartiality, Mayor Crane, you have been made a tour around all the HOAs, speaking to all the HOAs in the areas, encouraging to vote your way. Ms. Croyer, you've been seen at the post office along with your buddy, Sheila, telling residents and scaring residents about what's going on with automatic aid. None of this is fair. It's not impartial. If you try to tell us that you are being fair and impartial, you are undermining, you are lying, you're undermining our intelligence, and we don't appreciate that. By blocking your own firemen from participating, you have discredited yourselves. By attempting to push Carefree into a broken automatic aid system that is less safe and costs us at least a million dollars more per year to start, you have proven that public safety is not the real issue. By deliberately stoking fear, uncertainty, and doubt among your own constituents about your own fire department in order to get a property tax, you have demonstrated your lack of conscience. Before you invite anybody else to come to talk to us, to discredit our own firemen, we would like to see their response time, and we want to know precisely how many times they have called on Carefree firefighters for mutual aid assistance. That's right, mutual aid assistance. The very system that you claim is no longer working. Our Carefree residents deserve integrity in our public officials. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. John Trainor.
Good evening. John Trainor, twenty-three-year Carefree resident. I'll begin by describing what you have knowingly withheld from our residents about emergency services under automatic aid. Before I do so, I must advise residents that a few of you have attempted to scare the bejesus out of them, which is despicable, especially coming from this body. Trust is earned. Both the Phoenix and Scottsdale Fire Departments are in crisis. These facts from Phoenix are readily available from the Phoenix City Manager's Performance Dashboard. They're not made up. Emergency response times today are nearly nine minutes, far short of the national standard of five minutes and twenty seconds. There has been a fifty-four percent increase in emergency calls since two thousand and ten, fact. But only two point four percent increase in firefighters since then, fact. Responders have faced forty-nine percent increase in calls per shift, meaning longer response times, longer delays when service is needed most. Seventy-one percent of the units running calls are at crisis levels. Sixty-five percent of their fleet is past replacement age. By two thousand and twenty-five, just two years from now, Phoenix will have added an estimated half-million residents, which represents a city the size of Tucson. They project adding only fifty-one more firefighters than in two thousand and ten, which risks safety of every resident in Phoenix. What about Carefree? Annual emergency calls are projected to be over two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Response times are expected to increase to almost eleven and a half minutes. The statistics get even scarier by two thousand and thirty. How is it that a committee, appointed by the ex-mayor and six of you on this council, operated for two years, yet failed to uncover substantial flaws in the automatic aid system's largest member departments? They recommended the flawed system, which has significantly slower response times, at a much higher cost. They proceeded to further recommend the imposition of a property tax to purportedly fund that system. After reviewing these facts, it would be clear to any reasonable person that it should not have taken two years to dismiss automatic aid and realize that a property tax is a sham. You have perpetrated a deliberate misrepresentation of material facts concerning automatic aid in an effort to conceal the truth you knew or should have known, thus endangering the future health, safety, and welfare of citizens you have sworn to represent. I would have ended here, except Chief threw around a lot of information about innuendo. He didn't say what that was. You all know what the truth is. The committee should have known what the truth is two years ago. Thank you.
Mr. Glenn Ernst.
I'm Glenn Ernst. I live on Ridgeview Place in Carefree. I want to talk about response times. The fact that Cave Creek announced they were leaving Rural Metro means nothing because Carefree inherited the men and equipment from the Cave Creek Rural Metro. Rural Metro was about to lease another building on the west side of Carefree, which had made our response times even better. The lease search stopped because of the town's efforts to get rid of Rural Metro. We were at three minutes and twenty-two seconds. We would have been back to at least three minutes and twenty-two seconds if Rural Metro had been allowed to put one of their fire trucks in that extra building on the west side. There is no reason to continue to compare automatic response times from distant areas to auto aid, because Rural Metro can easily handle it. The dangers come when our people and equipment are called away, as in auto aid, and we need them here. Yes, it is quite possible that response times will be longer with automatic aid, and especially compared to Rural Metro right here in Carefree with a second location on the west side. Rural Metro response times would likely return to under three and a half minutes with the addition of additional building. Phoenix response times are currently at eight minutes and fifty-four seconds, according to the Phoenix City Manager's Performance Dashboard. This is the exact same auto aid group we would be signing onto. Keep in mind that there have been two structural failures in the last twenty years and one in the last ten years in Carefree. Anyone who attended the first two firefighting meetings saw the chiefs from surrounding areas pledge their allegiance to Rural Metro in an extreme emergency, regardless of paper agreements. Firefighters are brethren who help each other out, no matter what. Also, keep in mind that almost all of our emergency calls are for emergency medical aid. All Rural Metro equipment is dispatched with a paramedic. If you or a loved one are in need, do you want to take the chance that Rural Metro will be in the way and waiting for a slower response, which may not include a paramedic? The cost of automatic aid would be about one point seven million for the initial conversion, plus one million for the first year, and going up for the twenty-five-year commitment. Public health would not be improved, it would be put at risk.
Okay, so we have no more requests for Call to the Public, so that closes Call to... Oh, yeah, in fact, you did. I'm not sure what happened to it. But please come up, Ms. Barber. Sorry.
That's okay. It's not about Rural Metro.
I don't know what happened, so come on up.
Refreshing.
I saw your name, and I don't see your slip.
I know. I overused my time last time, so perhaps you were cutting me off in advance. No, I wasn't being mean. I wasn't being mean. So Stephanie Barber, Carefree resident and voter, and last month I did address the county council regarding the lack of development activity on the northeast corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road. But tonight, I would actually ask you to help us understand the status of another development within Carefree. Could you help us understand what is happening with the property on the corner of Carefree Highway and Tom Darlington, where a resort has been proposed? I did go to the March Planning and Zoning Meeting, and our Economic Development Director told us that we were on track to have this resort eighty percent complete by two thousand and twenty-five. That's only two years away and seemed unrealistic to me, given that the Planning and Zoning Commission have not received any plans from the developer yet. The vacant land is zoned very low-density residential, so it has to go through a formal and public zoning process in order to permit a resort to be constructed in that area. So I would kindly request that the zoning process for this resort not be planned over the summer, when the majority of those residents in that area are out of town. Our general plan allocates water to this area for roughly ten homes, not a large water user such as a resort. So I would also like to understand where the town is sort of contemplating getting the necessary water for this resort, when Carefree has just implemented stage-two drought restrictions and asked all residents to cut our water usage by ten percent. Carefree's webpage calls this resort "The Future of Carefree." This is a little confusing to me, because if you read our general plan, nowhere in our general plan does it mention the corner of Carefree Highway and Tom Darlington, or a possible development in that area, not once in the general plan. By contrast, our general plan references the development of the northeast corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road fifteen times, including carving out two hundred and six acre-feet of water for future commercial development. And when we ask about whether we were on track for development milestones for the northeast corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road, we were told that those milestones will not be met. And as a reminder, that land was zoned commercial in two thousand and eighteen. So the general plan, to my knowledge, is ratified by all Carefree voting residents, and it's our primary tool for guiding the future of Carefree. Our economic development plan efforts don't appear to be aligned with our Carefree general plan right now. Residents seem to never have intended for there to be a resort on the corner of Carefree Highway and Tom Darlington, but residents did intend there to be commercial development on the corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road.
Your time is up.
Okay. So all I'm asking is, please help us all understand what's going on with these developments, and not just whether a developer has submitted formal plans or not. Thank you.
Okay. Now, has anyone who would like to speak a call to the public had their say? So with that, we'll close Call to the Public, and council is permitted to respond to criticisms. And I think Councilwoman Amber Rosa would like to speak up.
Thanks. As many of you probably know, I've been at the post office long before, you know, since the fall, in trying to get people to come to our fire meetings to understand what was going on and the perspectives that we had from our consultants after we had... I was a member also of the Public Safety... was a member also of the Public Safety Advisory Commission. So I have been there, really starting out as a listening since I was elected, listening to residents, trying to answer questions, and help them solve problems. So if you’re going to accuse me of lying or fear mongering, I want to see the evidence. You don’t do that without the evidence. I’ve been there many times with many of you. I have been polite. I have not interfered with anything that you’re saying, and I would expect the same respect that I’m giving you. So if you think I’m lying, fear mongering, please come and talk to me and tell me what I’m doing wrong, because I like to do the research and be as accurate as possible. And if I’m wrong, I want to be corrected, so I don’t share misinformation. But don’t come and accuse me in a public forum without having evidence. Thank you.
It took two years. Please, please, sir, it’s got to be cool.
To gather information.
Okay, any other council...
Mr. Trainer.
Have, please. You have to have order, because we respected when Call to the Public spoke, and that was ...we’re going to have to say.
Mr. Mayor, I have something.
I think a healthy debate would be appropriate, as opposed to being...
This is not a forum. I think it’s important to understand that we’re residents before we’re council members. And our intent is to put the items to vote, so that you can decide. And that’s exactly what’s happening here. Yes, that’s exactly what’s happening.
Like last time with the water...
Please, please. Give him the respect that we gave you, please.
So as council members, as you know, this is a volunteer position, and we sacrifice a lot to serve our community in this capacity. I said to my wife today, today was her birthday, and she said, “We’re going out to dinner tonight with the kids.” And I said, “I have a council meeting, and I’m sitting up here so I can get yelled at for two hours and missing out on dinner with you guys and the kids.” So understand that in this process and in serving in this capacity, it’s not an easy thing, because ultimately, we’re looking out for the best interests of our residents. And that’s what we’re doing, whether it be the rezoning of properties through a general plan amendment, or whether it’s getting water resources to residents on the west side of our town, or whatever it may be, public safety. Okay? So it’s important that...this is nice that we have a great response here tonight. It should be like this every month. We should have people here every month. There was one month, as a water board, we voted to spend $2 million to put a tank in the ground, and you know who was here? We were here, and then we had two members of Planning and Zoning, and that was a public meeting, and we had nobody objecting to that. I didn’t see you here. No.
I gave up on that long ago.
Okay, well, point being is that you all have an opportunity. You have a voice. And when I joined this council almost five years ago, we voted to rezone the northeast corner of Cave Creek and Carefree Highway with restrictions, and we worked with that HOA. And we had an HOA member that was, along with the rest of the board, that was very vocal in voicing their concerns, and we worked with them, and we placed development restrictions on that corner, so there wouldn’t be a Costco there, so there wouldn’t be a gas station or a car wash. And that’s ultimately what happened, is that it is rezoned. So get involved. If you have objections to things, do what you’re doing tonight. That’s wonderful. If you have another solution, bring it to the table. But don’t accuse us of being crooks. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Geiger?
Just a couple of quick comments. I guess the reason why we’re going through this whole rigmarole is there was a material change to the backup for Rural Metro. We got a letter from Scottsdale that says, “We’re not coming.” They put it in writing, okay? Whether we believe it or not, that’s what they said. We lost the Cave Creek Station that’s now Daisy Mountain that used to come. They don’t come anymore. So I’m not advocating for one way or the other. I’m saying there was a material change in our fire service and emergency services backup. How would you feel if we knew about that change, and we didn’t say anything? Or if we didn’t say anything, or we said something, and we didn’t give you a choice? So I guess what I would say is, the people will have the choice to, do you want to fund automatic aid? Obviously, a lot of people don’t. There are some people that do. The citizens will decide. The council’s not deciding. The council’s providing the citizens the opportunity to decide. The only other point I want to make is on the property tax. The reason that it doesn’t have the language as to those funds are dedicated to fire on the property tax is because it doesn’t meet state law. You can’t do that. If we put that on there, it would be subject to a lawsuit, and it could get thrown out. So we passed a resolution that says those funds will be dedicated to fire. The town has had a one-cent sales tax dedicated to fire since 2007. All that money goes into the fire fund. Every month, you can see the checkbook. It’s all audited. So there’s a track record there. As far as the tax being able to increase, that tax is capped at $2 million. It cannot go up without a vote of the people. That’s just a fact. It can’t, it won’t go up every year. In fact, it’ll go down each year, as each new housing unit is added. No, really, guys, you may not believe it, you may not believe it, but if...excuse me, if you read, can I, please, please? If you read the language of the tax, it cannot be increased without a vote of the public. You may not believe it, but you can read it.
Ladies and gentlemen, we respected you when you spoke in Call to the Public.
You’re not supposed to be speaking now.
So, yes, we are. So, yes, we are. So give us the same consideration. Give us the same consideration, John.
Alls I want to do, Mr. Tr...
You had a chance.
No.
Everybody now gets a chance?
Give everyone the same consideration.
This is baloney. You know it.
Hey, Mr. Trainer, Mr. Trainer, please, sir, just show us some...okay, very well.
Okay, Los has a comment?
We can talk...
I just wanted to say about the law, that the town code 1512, the tax cannot increase without another vote of the residents. That’s the law. The property tax, if there is going to be one, cannot increase on its own.
But just to clarify, this is a...this is...our property tax is limited by a dollar value, which is not what you typically see in any of the other towns in Arizona. So we are limited by the $2 million. It is capped at $2 million. It cannot go higher. So if the value of your property increases, we actually would have to decrease the levy. That’s not the way it works in Scottsdale, Phoenix, or any other town. Because of the laws that we have in Carefree, it’s different, and it is capped at $2 million, it’s capped at a dollar value. That is fact.
Another important point about the ordinance that regulates the property tax is that that was passed by an initiative. What that means is that the council cannot change it. So we cannot take a vote and do, change that ordinance. It can only be changed by a will of the people, by another initiative. So it’s the law. So the property tax cannot be changed. It’s the law.
Finished me?
We’re finished. Well, I’ll give you a shot. Go ahead.
When you finish.
Okay. We also talked about, we’re planting seeds of doubt in Rural Metro. Rural Metro has done a great job, and we’ve said that over and over again, and we really believe it. What’s changed is what Dr. Marty...
Margettis.
Margettis said, is that our surroundings have changed. So Rural Metro, they do the same...I might even explain it if I have a chance. So what’s changed is that Rural Metro is still the same, they have the same firemen, they have the same equipment, they’re in the same spot, they have the same training, they work just as hard as ever. But what’s changed is that Scottsdale says, issued a termination letter to their mutual aid contract.
The mutual aid agreement, not mutual aid.
Mutual aid, they canceled their mutual aid agreement with us. They sent us a letter which said, “Likely, we will come if it’s a life situation.” Chief Shannon wrote the letter. So before, three years ago, they lived by that mutual aid agreement. But now, they won’t. Something, please, please, please.
This is not a debate.
I didn’t interrupt you, so please pay me the same respect. Please, please pay me the same respect. Come on. So the world, so the landscape has changed. Now, you may not think that’s important, and that’s okay. So we can have a good discussion without character assassination, without misinformation. You can make your own decisions. So if you think that that change that I just described is insignificant to you, that’s cool. If you think that you do a cost-risk analysis of what the property tax costs versus that change, and you don’t think that’s significant, that’s okay also. You can vote against it. But some folks might think it is significant, and so they have a chance to vote for it. That’s what it comes down to.
May I ring?
Please, please. No. Any other comments from council, criticism responses? Okay, so I’m going to have to pass on you, too. Sorry.
One comment.
Go ahead, Councilman Johnson.
In the last council meeting, there was a discussion of what I would call, excuse me, privilege. Our community, I was president of the HOA at that time, five years ago, and we were characterized as privileged because we worked with the developer and the council to get a rezoning plan for the northeast corner that we believed worked for the town. There are 25 homes in that development. There is no way that 25 homes could force anybody to do anything. We did it in a collaborative effort, and we did it to defend our homes just the way any other HOA would do it. I resent those accusations, and I don’t think they should have been made in fairness.
I’d just like to add on to that. I was on the council then, and I was in the meetings, and I know, I believed then, and I believe now, that I wouldn’t approve anything in someone else’s backyard that I wouldn’t approve in my own. And we listened to you, and I didn’t know you then.
The water tank is a...
Please, ma’am.
Is that in your backyard?
Please, there’s no...please. One last comment I have, it was a response to a criticism. Criticism was made that we went to HOA meetings and to lobby for, campaign for the property tax. So what I did is I went there, and I just explained basically what I just explained tonight. People have a choice, and I encourage people to do...please, I encourage people to do their homework. And there were plenty of people at those meetings. I was invited, and I went. And that’s what happened at those meetings. In fact, if we still have them, we...the town published, based on the Public Safety Advisory Committee findings, a flyer which used to be back there, and you’ve all seen it, it’s in Town Hall if you haven’t seen it. And that’s basically what we worked from. Okay, any other response to criticism? Okay, that closes that phase of the evening. Thank you. Next up is Call, is the current events.
Yes, I...
Go ahead.
Could I...oh, go ahead. Do you want to go first?
You want me to go first?
You did say I...
Okay, so every 10 years, there is amendment to the general plan, and there is a community survey that is open, that can be accessed through the town website. There is a series of meetings that are coming up, April 26th, the Community Workshop, June 19th, and once again, on October 11th. Go to carefree.org/community- outreach for more information. The town’s current general plan was last updated 10 years ago. The general plan addresses a wide variety of issues, including land use, transportation, open space, and water resources. Because the general plan establishes a community-based vision for Carefree’s future, the town has been conducting various outreach efforts to involve as many citizens as possible in the update process. So please get involved, participate in the survey, so that we can hear from you, as well as attending the workshops, April 26th, June 19th, and October 11th. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I just wanted to make an announcement that there’ll be the Last of the Seasons Garden Seminars on April 15th in the chambers at 9:30 in the morning. It’s being given by Katie Coats, who’s a certified desert landscape designer, and she’ll be talking about design for the outdoor with small, in small spaces. So it should be a really good topic, and it’s always worthwhile to come to these garden seminars. Thank you.
All right. One last current event, Earth Day, the 22nd of April, from 9 o’clock until 1 o’clock in the pavilion. And a cool feature here this year is EV electric vehicles. So we have a club there. They’re going to bring like 10 different vehicles. They’ll give you a ride. Also, Santis and Lincoln will be there showing off some of their ideas for electric vehicles. So we’ll talk about that a little bit later in the program this evening, because we have a road closure associated with that. Okay, it closes item number five, Current Events. Item number six, Review and Discussion Regarding Items Discussed at March’s Town Council Call to the Public. Mr. Neese.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As with this current Call to the Public last month, there were a few speakers, quite a few speakers, and quite a bit to unpack, but I want to focus the response to those issues that were brought up by residents, to a developer’s contribution to the water system, which was touched upon again tonight in the Call to the Public, and also the developers, a developer’s desire to change a publicly vetted and approved commercially zoned property. To start off with, let’s focus on the water contribution. And to begin the presentation, let me call upon Greg Crossman, the General Manager of the Carefree Water Company, to address the financial disclosure that appeared in the Water Company Utility Community Facility District that discloses a million-dollar contribution to the water system.
Mayor Crane, members of the council, good evening. My name is Greg Crossman. I’m the General Manager of the Carefree Water Company, and also the District Manager of the Utilities Community Facilities District, or the UCFD. I have been asked to respond to one of the Call to the Public comments received at the last council meeting on March 7th. I did not attend that meeting, but I did watch the video, and the comments that I will be addressing were related to the line item for developer contribution in the final UCFD budget. Transparency and trust were also mentioned in these comments. The final UCFD budget is shown on the right-hand portion of this slide that is up on the screen. This budget did go to the Board of Directors at two public meetings in a row, to the May and June 2022 board meetings. And actually, there were questions and discussions about this line item at the May meeting. The first question was about where this money would be coming from, with the answer being from the developer of the northeast corner of Cave Creek Road and Carefree Highway. And the second question was, what would happen, or what will happen, if the money is not received, with the answer being that if the money is not received, it obviously would not be spent. Those comments and questions from the board resulted in footnote one, which is highlighted up on the screen, up on this slide, which reads, “Potential Funding Source. Expenditures Will Be Adjusted If Not Received.” So this footnote is in the document. As a side note, it is common practice for developers to contribute to or to be responsible for infrastructure that benefits their project. We would not be doing our jobs as public officials if we did not require private development to pay its own way for infrastructure improvements. This is part of our responsibility to protect the community and our community. In this case, the developer contribution has not been received by the UCFD, and the specific infrastructure that this money, these funds, would have been used to construct have not been expended. would have been used to construct have not been expended, and that infrastructure has not been constructed. All this information was shared prior to the March 7th council meeting. So we've been fully transparent on this item. And so with that, I will turn it back over to Mr. Neese to continue the discussion.
Can I, can I, there's another rumor going around, and it would be wonderful to have Greg address it, so that it doesn't become a ridiculous rumor. You know, it's, it's a really simple question, and it's, it's, it's not, it, it basically, I mean, so the rumor that's going around right now is that, that work being done on Langwood Lane off of Tom Darlington is a commercial-sized water connection. Could you just tell us what that is, so we can put this to bed once and for all?
Go ahead, sir.
Mayor Crane, are you okay with me answering that question?
Yes, please ask the question.
Yes, that is a new interconnection with the city of Scottsdale. It is intended to help fill the reservoir along Tom Darlington, the Tom Darlington Reservoir. It will control water up to the reservoir along with water from our own water system. So it's a belts and suspenders thing, which I like, helps me sleep at night. So we'll have two feeds into the reservoir. Has nothing to do with the development of the northwest corner of Carefree Highway and Tom Darlington. And I, as I have stated many times, all the infrastructure we've been constructing to serve the acquisition areas is not of adequate pressure to serve the northwest corner of Carefree Highway and Tom Darlington. It never was, and it continues not to be adequate to serve that development. We have had discussions with the, with potential developers of that corner, and we have told them, you need to go back to the pre-existing infrastructure that we had in the system prior to the development of, of all of this, this infrastructure for the acquisition, and tie into that, and reconnect that. That's always been in place, and that's what they need to tie into because that's a system that's at the adequate pressure. So hopefully, Ms. Barbara, that answers your question.
It answers a lot of people's questions. That's how you build trust. A simple question, a great answer. Thank you, Greg.
Yep. And thank you for the question, because it has come up, and we have tried to answer, but now we've answered it in a public forum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, I would also be remiss to not also state in association with this water system developer contribution that even in the document held up by the residents, it was the fiscal impact study that was given to them by this proposed developer, Thompson Thrift. Page two of the executive summary, page 12 and 13 of the report cite this contribution to the water system. The developer even discloses it, and our documentation in the budget even discloses it. And through our budget discussions with the water company, they even disclosed it. We talk about once again transparency and trust. It has been disclosed on both ends of the table.
You know, but something we should be very pleased that we've done. They're gonna pay for the infrastructure that's gonna allow that development, which will produce sales tax revenue someday. And they're gonna pay for it. They're gonna pay for that infrastructure going down there. Okay, go ahead.
All right, moving forward, thank you, Greg. Moving forward, the northeast corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road. And there's three common threads, if you will, that were addressed through the citizen comments. One, which was also discussed tonight, that the town has stalled that development. Two, they cited this developer financial study and said that high-density residential development would be more valid than the underlying zoning and site plan that was publicly vetted. And then they referenced this proposal would offset the need for the proposed public safety property tax. Let's look at the, the first issue, which is the respective delays. Those respective delays were never something the town wanted. The town had a developer. That developer rezoned that corner from the underlying low-density residential, 35,000 square foot lots, to a commercial site plan. That was moving a mountain in the town of Carefree. And through that process, a site plan was agreed. They then went to the town of Cave Creek, and through their billing permit process, asked for a will-serv letter. That will-serv letter was refused. Delay number one. You cannot develop without water. We eventually went to arbitration over this. Three commercial judges decided this case. That's the fact. In their decision, they said clearly and concisely, Cave Creek breached their contract of good faith and fair dealing by denying water to that corner. The delay wasn't a result of anything the town of Carefree did. It was a result of the actions in Cave Creek to stop a development, a development that went across the street eventually to Carefree. If residents in Carefree want to be incited about something, they should be angry about what Cave Creek did to us at that period of time. We had Sprouts and all those stores in tow. We had approved site plan. We were at building permit stage, and they refused to give us water. Second delay is financial. We all understand the world changed in 2020, 2021, when the pandemic hit. That impacted everything, the world as we knew it. It impacted development. The costs went up. Supply chain issues were front and center. The developer was still trying to get a site plan going. But with all these commercial developers, there's a performer, there's a box that they have, and they don't deviate. They're successful with their respective plans, their business plans. This developer had performance criteria, and with the cost escalation of the infrastructure and going vertical in that development, it didn't pencil out. But he said, I have all the tenants lined up, but they won't pay the leases that I need them to pay to make this profitable for me. So the bottom line is I have to push the pause button. This is done throughout the nation. Retail development goes through various cycles. And we're going through one of those cycles with retail right now. Does that mean that we just do anything in Carefree and, and do high-density development here? No. We can push the pause button and ensure that we get the right thing. It's done everywhere. So the end of the day, water and the financial circumstances delayed the development here. But the latest and greatest is Thompson Thrift. So let me call upon Stacy Ridge Denzek. She's our Planning and Zoning Director. She's gonna highlight the differences between what Thompson Thrift is proposing and the publicly vetted and approved site plan.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Town Council, thank you. Actually, a lot of what I was going to discuss, I think, was really great. You heard it from the actual residents themselves about going through a process back in 2018. There was a land use in place. It contemplated commercial. We went through the process with the interested developer that Gary is referencing. And you, in this process, I think council is in a tough position. You have to weigh the community benefits with the nearby neighbors' concerns. And we went through that process, and you can see that in the site plan that says Town Council Approved Plan up above, the one that has more of the green in it. That's the one that is attached to the ordinance that was referenced earlier, the 2018 ordinance. And what you can see in that plan is that, and nothing is, there is some similarities between what then Thompson Thrift, an interested developer, was contemplating versus what was approved, is that there was a shift of the, of the wash that goes through the property. And in fact, that was a benefit, I think, for either development, for the neighbors, particularly those to the north and the east, in the 10-acre square parcel where right now, that was approved was office and retail. It created this buffer, as well as then when we look at the upper triangle, which has a medical office and office use. There was a lot of discussion at that time about, not only was it creating buffers, buffers from distance, distance from buildings, there was also physical buffers, such as screen walls and, and, and planting. So a lot of this was thought through, was worked through with the neighborhoods. Part of that plan that was important as well, that was approved by Town Council, was having that commercial base, having that type of zoning, but really maximizing what the frontage along Carefree Highway, that you see as you continue west, actually, on Carefree Highway and Cave Creek. We see that as a roadway where we see the, the highest potential for the type of commercial and restaurant and development that would help supplement the town and the town's fee structures. And then we, as part of our job, we, we talked to anybody who is interested in developing their parcel. It could be whether you're developing a single-family lot, or if you're looking to develop a commercial corner. That's when Thompson Thrift entered, entered the scene, so to speak. They, obviously, you heard, went through the neighborhood, and they, they were looking at this plan. Part of what I do is to talk to them, a lot of beginnings of a process is what we have, is called a pre-application meeting. So I looked at the plan, and I evaluated, and, and there's obvious differences that you can see, even being a non-planner. But we talked, they wanted to do this high density. We have mechanisms in place that sort of limit what that density could be. Their proposal exceeded that in terms of the number of units. They didn't have enough of the required parking. They didn't have enough of covered parking. And just, and really, bottom line is, it doesn't, it's not permitted in commercial zoning. So they would have to go through a rezon process. And that's the most important part, is that they would have to go through, again, a similar legislative process that was originally approved through Town Council. And so this is part of the process. They have their right to, to due diligence, but it also is, our position is to, one, go back and look at the promises that were made, and look at the benefits of one plan compared to the other. And we, and I believe as the Planning Director, that the Town Council Approved Plan is more in, in concert to the goals of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Another thing to note is, yes, apartments create a critical mass. But that critical mass displaces a lot of sales, sales generating businesses. If you look along the frontage here, these are restaurants. Restaurants need the visibility. Those restaurants are eliminated here. This is what they call a grocery store. The grocery store that was originally proposed was Sprouts. All the other grocers are in the marketplace now. There is no other grocer. The financial assessment that the developer had makes assumptions that this is a grocery store. There are no grocery stores in the area. We would love to get Trader Joe's up here, but we can't force them. They're looking at the Beltway, where the 101 is, Desert Ridge. They're not looking up here. We've talked to them. The end of the day, there's assumptions made in financial analysis, financial assessments by the developer that are inaccurate. You can't say that a grocer would go here. And that grocery, those groceries are taxed at 2%, not 3%. So their numbers are off. The rental tax associated with this apartment complex could go away in the future by two mechanisms. And we've seen it all over the valley. Apartments can be made into condominiums, and there's no rental tax. It's happened all over the valley. Additionally, we had the talk about a bill floating through the state legislature of elimination of the rental tax. In my 30-plus-year career, there's an evolution to these discussions, and eventually something resonates and sticks with a future legislative session. It's only a matter of time before that's eliminated, that tax eliminated. So this is not the panacea. Matter of fact, what that critical mass does, since it eliminates potential sales tax for Carefree, it creates a critical mass for who? The businesses across the street in Cave Creek. They'll go to the Walmart. They'll go to Sprouts. They'll go to all those restaurants that Cave Creek just put up. So it doesn't benefit us. It benefits Cave Creek. And Cave Creek is just laughing. We held up the water, and now they're putting apartments to benefit our businesses. Great. I mean, that's, that's not an optimal plan. So that's our concern from a planning perspective, from a financial perspective. That is not the panacea. Let's talk a little bit more about economics and seeking financial stability. This is something that goes back about six or seven years, and we had numerous, numerous public meetings. We even had a joint meeting of the Town Council and, and, and Planning and Zoning, one of the few ones that, that we've had over many years. And this was about seeking financial sustainability and focusing on our sales tax-centric model. What we know from an expense side of the ledger is that, like everybody else's expenses, they go up. They don't typically go down. To operate the town, our expenses incrementally go up. We have to anticipate that and ensure that in the future, we can pay those bills. Our infrastructure, like any of us, it's not getting any younger. And as we age, and as our infrastructure ages, you have to maintain yourself, you have to maintain that infrastructure. If you don't, your medical bills will go up. If you don't maintain your infrastructure, your bills go up exponentially. We've employed best maintenance practices with our streets to mitigate that. And if we don't maintain our streets, they will, in return, deteriorate, which exponentially increases the cost. So we have to anticipate those costs continuing to increase. They're all petroleum-based products, like the price of gas. Everybody knows what it is today. It's not going down. Keeps on going up. That results in these street projects also going up because they're petroleum-based product. So our costs, from an operational perspective and from a capital perspective, incrementally go up each year. The idea about seeking financial sustainability when you have a sales tax-centric model is to ensure that you have enough revenue coming in. And what are your risks? How do you diversify? How do you ensure that you insulate yourself from those risks? Through those series of public meetings, there were discussions about the northeast corner and ensuring that that generated sales tax to offset these increasing costs to operate the town and pay for the increasing costs of maintaining our infrastructure. So that discussion, once again, predates this issue with automatic aid. Back then, we didn't even anticipate the discussion with automatic aid. Once again, two years ago, external influences started happening that forced that discussion. We didn't want to have that discussion. As a matter of fact, I pushed back with all the other fire chiefs about this automatic aid. They weren't happy about it. This is a discussion that's being forced upon us, whether we like it or not. And so we are now in that discussion about funding this. But the whole idea behind the northeast corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road predates the automatic aid discussion, and it was there to anticipate additional revenue to offset the increasing costs, not increasing the service to something such as automatic aid. So the bottom line here is the development of the northeast corner of Cave Creek Road is not the panacea that would offset the need for a public safety property tax. So in summary, it is sensible and equitable to request a developer to pay for correlating infrastructure that will supply services to their property. The Water Company's budget forecasts and documented this potential payment. Even the developer's financial assessment documented. documented and anticipated this payment. It's been transparent throughout. The northeast corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road, it is the responsibility of staff and your elected representatives to enforce the publicly vetted and approved zoning. When we meet with a new developer, we the staff, as Stacy explained, these community expectations are shared with the developer. Enforcing and sharing the community expectations are appropriate. That's what builds trust. Promises made, promises kept. What we say is what we do. This northeast corner, we promised the neighborhood, hey, you're compromising here. This was single-family homes. This could develop tomorrow as single-family homes. And we work with them to get a commercial site plan that they felt helped to transition the the um the uses that would develop on that site. They were comfortable with that. We promised them that we would deliver that. We are still working on those promises. So Mayor, that concludes my remarks in reference to uh called the public last month and be glad to address any questions that the council might have.
I have a just a comment. So now if we look back on what those neighbors did relative to this the northeast corner property, right in their backyard, they went from like R135, one house per acre to commercial. They actually agreed to that. I don't know how many of us would agree to that. You know, just go home, when you go home tonight, just look out your backyard and just imagine agreeing to that. And so then to take them to task for 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 objecting to high-density residential replacing some of that commercial that we came to an agreement on, right? We certainly can't, we're not gonna violate that trust with them. Uh that's just bottom line. We're not, I wouldn't would not go along for that. Just a couple of other comments. Um the the zoning of the, if you look at the density of the uh, if you could put up that the visual of of the uh, that density that shows the proposed residential development, that's higher than any density that we have in our zoning ordinances today. I mean, it's that dense of pushing the pause button. So we have a finite palette of of commercial property. We can't afford to mess it up. We can't afford to get as much out of it as we reasonably can. So unlike Chandler, for example, where they have like mile after mile of of intersections, where they mess one up, okay, fine, we'll just go to the next one. We don't have that luxury. We have to do things right. And if it means we have to wait, then we wait. Because if we mess it up, it's there forever and we'll never recoup that loss. Now, we had a developer to uh one prior to the the current uh thrift developer who came up with tenants and he pieced it together, but it didn't work financially. So if you look at the ingredients of that equation very simply, they need to, they have the cost of infrastructure that they have to put in, like widening roads and traffic lights and stuff. They need to move the wash. That's part of the of the plat that was approved. They have uh the the cost of the land and of course, how much money they want to make. So it's not our responsibility to make them whole so they can come in and deviate from what was agreed to. And we know it can be done. So these have to, they have to make the numbers work. Not gonna put it on our backs. But they they're welcome to come in and and bring a proposal and we'll study it and look at it. Um that's that's my comments. I'll turn it over to anybody else who has something to say. Mr. Geiger?
Yeah, I'd I'd like to um get something on the record regarding the northeast corner. So the corner was rezoned in twenty eighteen from low-density residential to commercial. And it was kind of a key part of the twenty twenty economic development plan to add to our sales tax base to help the town mitigate the impacts of inflation going forward. One of the key expense items the plan was developed to provide long-term funding was the contract with Rural Metro and the mutual aid fire system and emergency services. The plan was never, the economic development plan was never intended to cover the higher costs of automatic aid and did not assume the town would experience a twenty percent increase in the cost of Rural Metro in our most me most recent contract. No development at this location will pay for automatic aid and mitigate the need for a property tax to pay the extra cost if that's the level of fire and emergency services the people of Carefree want. I've been accused of blocking two proposed developments on the corner. The first proposed development was based on having Sprouts as the anchor tenant, as was laid out earlier. The Sprouts opened in February of twenty twenty and the negotiations with the developer occurred in the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen timeframe. The biggest roadblock was the fact that Cave Creek would not give the developer a will serve letter to provide water service. I was elected to the council in August of twenty twenty and sworn in in November of twenty twenty. This is well after the Sprouts had already opened in Cave Creek. I don't know how I was able to block the development as I was not on the council at the time. In fact, during the twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen timeframe, I was working to convince the town that they needed to do the water consolidation project to bring the Carefree citizens served by Cave Creek into the Carefree Water Company. I was in no position to block development on the northeast corner parcel that the town had been working on for several years and was viewed as a key linchpin of its economic development strategy. Also note that Cave Creek's unwillingness to provide the will serve letter for water service highlighted to the mayor and council in office at the time, the necessity for the town to control its water resources and in my opinion, was the final factor that convinced them they needed to do the water consolidation project. The only other development proposal that has been considered for this parcel is the Thompson Thrift plan to build a hundred and twenty-six apartments with a small retail component. Towards the end of twenty twenty-two, the developer Thompson Thrift requested a meeting with the town and asked that there be elected officials at the meeting so they could gauge the town's appetite for a zoning change as their plan would require the zoning to go from commercial to mixed-use high-density residential. As was explained to me, the developer wanted feedback because they did not want to spend a significant amount of money developing a pro- a proposal costing upwards of five hundred thousand dollars if the elected officials had no stomach for changing the zoning. At the meeting, I was asked how I felt about changing the zoning on the northeast corner from uh to mixed-use high-density residential. I explained that we had just come through a very difficult election and that one of the big issues was concern from the public that the town was going to put intensive development on all available open land. Taking my cues from neighbors of the parcel, as well as the many letters to the editor written by other citizens and some council candidates, I told Thompson Thrift I did not see their plan as so that's something our citizens would want. I told them I was not up for a zoning change fight. It is worth noting that at that meeting, I expressed my unease regarding Thompson Thrift's tactics of community outreach. The developer had their consultant canvass the neighborhoods adjacent to the proposed apartments on Mother's Day of twenty twenty-two. The canvassers had a form letter addressed to the Carefree mayor and council that they were trying to get people to sign that said they supported the proposed high-density residential and mixed-use development. The canvassers would not provide sight maps or detail and only let select individuals even look at what they had. The head Thompson Thrift person at our meeting apologized and expressed regret regarding the tactics of their consultant. I took them at their word. I was disappointed at the March council meeting. It appeared that citizens who previously expressed being against intensive development and now supported the high-density apartment and mixed-use development proposal had details from the meeting the developer had with the town. Further, there was an individual at the March council meeting from Thompson Thrift who was also at the meeting that was held with the town and elected officials when they were trying to get a reading on our willingness to do a zoning change. I'm beginning a seat to see a pattern in Thompson Thrift's tactics. The town has an obligation to provide any developer with due process for any proposal they want to make, and we have done so up to this point and we will continue to do so in the future. By the same token, we not, we have an obligation to our citizens to keep our promises and not go back on agreements made without their input and a compelling reason to do so. The standard is the greatest common good with the least private harm. We need the northeast corner to provide us with significant sales tax revenue into the future. It is one of the last parcels we have and we need to make sure that whatever is built there meets the standards of the community and is not just a knee-jerk reaction. It is especially critical that we evaluate any proposal with a keen eye towards impacts on our water resources, public safety, fire and emergency services, and traffic. We also need to consider the impact of proposals in the state legislature to exempt sales taxes on residential leases. If trying to protect the interests of our town causes some in the development community to consider us hard to deal with, as was suggested during the call to the public in the March council meeting, I can live with that. I don't represent developers. I represent represent the citizens of Carefree.
Any other comments?
I'd like to give you a perspective of what happened on that property from the time I was involved with it. At the March seventh town council meeting, multiple citizens spoke at the call to the public. The primary criticism made was the alleged failure of the town to develop the commercial property on the northeast corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road from the time it was rezoned from low-density residential to commercial in twenty eighteen. The speakers asserted that the town council, town administration, and the HOA of the neighborhood that backs up to the northeast corner, eastern border, have been colluding, my words, colluding since twenty eighteen to block any development on that property. The speakers also claim that the town and HOA are now refusing to support a rezoning proposal for mixed-use development, thus depriving Carefree of a portion of the additional one point three million required to pay for the upgrade to automatic aid. Furthermore, the speakers claimed that the HOA, which consists of only twenty-five homes, is somehow privileged and receiving special treatment to the detriment of Carefree's other residents. Let's discuss the facts and what really happened. In the twenty, in twenty eighteen, the developer, the Empire Group, informed the HOA of a rezoning project consisting of high-density, high-impact commercial buildings that would bring significant environmental impacts for noise and light pollution, massive increased foot and vehicle traffic, and a plan to move the natural wash that runs through the center of the property directly onto the HOA's western border with a minimal buffer zone. Naturally, the residents at the time were alarmed and taken by surprise. They were given very little time to respond to this project on their border. The HOA, for the good of the community, chose to work with Empire and Carefree to rezon the property from low-density residential to commercial on the condition that the new businesses produce sales tax revenue for the town and fit with the character and charm of Carefree. These actions were fully and publicly vetted up to and during the town council meeting where the rezoning ordinance number twenty eighteen dash oh six was amended and passed. In the end, the residents of the HOA stopped an inappropriate location for an emergency hospital, car wash, and gas station, which would have produced little if any sales tax revenue from being built directly behind them. Although the developer claimed they weren't interested in building a hospital at the time, but did seek a special use permit, it's curious that the emergency hospital was built in Cave Creek just down the street off Carefree Highway and the Sprouts complex that was planned for the northeast corner was instead built in Cave Creek next to the Chevron Station. So why hasn't the property been developed as of two thousand twenty-three? The town of Cave Creek, and I'm reiterating, refused to issue a will serve letter and the developer at its option never contributed any money, including the claimed one million dollar payment for access to an alternative water source. There was no water for development until the Carefree Water Project was completed and Empire lost its anchor Sprouts. In addition, the COVID pandemic struck in twenty twenty, causing supply chains to break and material, fuel, and financing costs to rise. I suspect the developer's profit model could no longer absorb the impacts, especially in today's interest rate environment. Today, we have a new developer, Thompson Thrift, that wants the town to rezon the northeast corner for mixed-use, high-density residential and commercial. The project could bring estimated one ten to a hundred and forty low-end, high-density town-style apartments on approximately two-thirds of the twenty-five acres on the northeast corner backing up to the same HOA's western border with the rest of the property being commercial businesses. The natural wash would still be redirected to the HOA's border and a buffer zone, if any, is unclear. With respect to Thompson Thrift's suggested project as an example, if they build a hundred and twenty-five apartments and rent them at an average of three thousand dollars per month, with a three percent rental tax at full occupancy, they might redo produce a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand, but I think my HOA estimates eighty to a hundred, in annual tax revenues. The town needs at least one point three million dollars. Also, it's doubtful that businesses on the remaining one-third of the property will do much better in producing sales tax revenue. Furthermore, it's possible the three percent rental tax could be eliminated through the ballot or the legislature. The project and the project could add as many as three hundred people to Carefree's population, my guess. Accordingly, the impact on social and emergency services, foot and vehicle traffic, water uses, and the environment will be significant. The residents will probably do most of their shopping in Cave Creek and Scottsdale. Finally, what's to prevent the apartments from converting to condos, which would eliminate the rental tax revenue?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments from council?
Uh I do something briefly. So I I think it's important, the the whole point of all of this obviously is to get involved and to to understand that that we all have a voice in what happens in our town, you know, on particular corners. Um a couple of years ago, I served as president of the Cave Creek Museum. I don't know if if any of you folks knew that or not, but I did. And it was during the pandemic. And the worst time to run a museum is when you have to stay closed and you can't go in and pay admission and do anything. And it was the absolute worst. I thought it was a joke half the time. Um and um there were a lot of sleep sleepless nights and a lot of decisions that had to be made, very difficult. Now the museum is thriving. It's wonderful. Um but during that time, we had looked at the possibility of relocating the museum and had a chance to um uh look at some different properties in and around the desert foothills community, not just Cave Creek. There were some identified spots. Uh and we looked here in Carefree. And one one spot in particular was the northwest corner of Tom Darlington and Care Carefree Highway. Uh had a chance to walk the property uh and 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 uh speak to the owner, um drew up a a little site plan of potentially having some some land donated with a mixed use of an art center with a museum and and some low-density, you know, things. And it was a couple of years ago and and uh nothing was, you know, obviously nothing was agreed upon. But um come to find out and serving as a bit of a historian for the town, because I live in the first town, uh first house built in town across the street from Bash's, um that that there was a a site plan uh for that property forty years ago for a strip mall. And it never came to fruition. Um the the neighbors in the in the area, as you can imagine, um you know, didn't quite want that and and wanted to see something different there. And so the the property has changed hands several times. So that corner was seen as a a gateway in in being big in commerce. So it's not the first time that that things like that have been proposed for that property. But the point of all of this is we all have a say here. And just as we did with Mike's uh HOA uh and in how certain development restrictions were placed on those properties, um those are things that if if you live in that area and behind that, and we all live within, you know, a a two-minute drive of it, uh that that you can be involved in that process and and helping to uh to to do those things. And and as Mayor Crane said, we don't have a lot of corners to screw up in this town. Um and we have to make the most of what we have. And we also have to look at uh revenue generation in certain areas too, because of the fact that we have no town-specific property tax right now. Um and I say that. Um and uh even with our contract with Rural Metro, um we may be running at a deficit in how those services are paid for as a result of things that we couldn't get done four years ago on the northeast couldn't get done four years ago on the northeast corner in, in trying to, to get water to that corner. So, uh, these are things that we'll continue to discuss, and we encourage you, please, don't just show up when you're mad. Show up all the time and, and, you know, and be involved in the process and don't play telephone with this stuff. Uh, don't, you know, be content with what you hear from other people. I had a conversation with a very good friend of mine that thought that the northwest corner was a hundred and twenty-one acres of land. It's, it's literally, it's less than twenty and closer to twelve that would actually get developed. It's not a hundred and twenty-one. Uh, one of, one of my friends that's a resident in a nearby community thought that they had a town property tax. We have no town property tax right now. So, um, be informed, and the best way to do that, aside from coming to these meetings, is speak to this guy. Gary Neese is the longest-serving, uh, employee in, in all of the desert foothills of, of all of our towns. So Steve Propkeck, Propokeck, Chek, Prokepek, whatever. Uh, Steve is, is also does a great job as Economic Development Director, and he's in the know. What's that? Invaluable is, is one of many words you can use to describe Steve, and, and, and he is just very engaged and he is very, very friendly and approachable. So please, please, make time, go into Town Hall, it's how I got involved, and, and get to know people, um, and find out what's really going on from the people in the know. Greg Crossman, Stacy, they're all here, Candace, even Mike Wright, for gosh sakes, and his billable rate as an attorney. Um, but, uh, but they're all good people and they're here to serve us, all of us. So that's all I have.
And we said not only talk to Mr. Neese, but talk to us. I mean, we're accessible, you can, we'd love to hear from you, actually, that's what we're here for. All right, if there's nothing else on the subject, let's move on to, uh, item number seven. So item number seven, review, discussion, and possible action to approve the closure of Ho-Hum Drive behind Sanderson Link Pavilion on Saturday, April twenty-second, from eight AM to two PM for the Earth Day celebration event. So, um, basically, we want to, the town wishes to close this small stretch of road. Uh, what'll be there is the, some EV vehicles, the Carefree fire truck, uh, all part of the Earth Day program. So what we're asked to do is approve this closure, um, to be executed on the morning of April twenty-second, and, uh, be happy to entertain any questions.
I'm, I move that we, uh, approve the closure of Ho-Hum Drive behind the pavilion on Saturday, April twenty-second, from ten AM to two PM for the Earth Day celebration.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passage unanimously, thank you. Item number eight, review, discussion, and public hearing to amend Planning and Zoning Code three point zero-two, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Section three point zero-three, Development Review Board, to set out term limits for each.
Thank you. Yep, thank you, Mayor, uh, members of the council. This is the second reading and public hearing, uh, for this case, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh four. Uh, as you, uh, stated, it would establish term limits for the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, which also acts as a development review board, which are consistent with the town council term limits. Uh, the terms will consist of four-year stagger terms. The three recently reappointed incumbent commissioners would serve two-year term and then can be reappointed for another four years before being termed out, so a total of six additional years. Uh, the four new commissioners would serve an initial term of four years and can be reappointed for another four years, uh, before being termed out, so, uh, a total of eight years. There is a two-year, um, timeline in between terms where they could come back if they choose to be reconsidered for appointment by a future council. Uh, the suggested motion in front of, uh, the town council after you open and close the public hearing to allow the public to speak is to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh four to once again establish term limits for the Planning and Zoning Commission and Development Review Board.
Okay, so I just have one comment. So what is being proposed is essentially the same, uh, methodology as the citizens approved in the initiative passed a year ago. Staggered four-year terms for council, and this is essentially staggered four-year terms for planning and zoning commissioners. So if, if there's no other comments from council, we'll open up the public hearing. And anyone who wishes to comment, welcome to come up to the podium and state your name and address and speak your mind. Okay, hearing none, the public hearing is closed, and now we will have a vote, accept a motion to, um...
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two zero two-three dash oh four, establishing term limits for the planning commission, development review board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passage unanimously, thank you. Moving on to item number nine, review, discussion, and possible action to approve ordinance two zero two-three dash zero one regarding zoning definitions amended to align with and support recently passed short-term rental regulations.
Here I am. I know, I don't know, I kind of got comfortable over here at the podium, so, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the town council, um, thank you. This actually also is a public hearing. Um, this is really, um, amending the zoning ordinance to help supplement the short-term rental, uh, ordinance that we passed, that you all passed, um, last meeting. Um, it was almost kind of like housekeeping information that, um, I had learned about following meetings with Scottsdale and understanding how to, in some manner, um, regulate or control occupancy. And really, these definitions come from the state statute definitions for, for family and housekeeping units. So it's, it's really just sort of updating and aligning, um, our zoning ordinance with the, um, with the state statute as well as the short-term rental ordinance that we have. And so, um, this, again, this is similarly as with Gary, this is, um, a, a public hearing to be opened and to receive information. Um, and if you so choose, um, there is an ordinance that was attached to your report, um, twenty twenty-three oh one, to make a motion on. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from council? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So now we'll open up the public hearing. Any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Um, but I do have one, one question. So do we have to, uh, is this the first reading? Is, do we need a second reading? How does this work?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, this went to planning and zoning, so as a ordinance that goes to planning and zoning, it has two public hearings already. You're the second hearing. In the other case, it just went to town council because it impacted Planning and Zoning Commission. So we kept them out of it and, and kept it, uh, with the legislative body, the town council. So the second reading is the town council in this case.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you. All right, so now we're ready to consider ordinance number two zero two-three dash zero one. Have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh one.
Okay, good, thank you. Period.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passage unanimously. Everybody, thank you. Right at number ten, adjournments?
I believe that's my, 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 uh, part. Um, I move that we adjourn this meeting, even though I'm having such a great time.
Second. Second.
Okay, thank you all for sticking around and, uh, hearing this out.